Before we start, I'd like to welcome Jason Bazwell to one of our Milton City firefighters to lead us in our invocation.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this blessed day, Lord, and we humbly come before you tonight, Lord, and ask for your blessings upon this mayor and this council and the decisions that will be made here tonight, Lord. We ask for your guidance and leadership, in your son's precious holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Just want to welcome everybody here. We're glad to have you tonight. Tonight, we have a special visitor. Our mayor for the day is Kyle Wykoff. And Kyle's a seventeen-year-old senior at Milton High School. He's a starting linebacker on the school's football team, and he's interested in local government and politics. He hopes to use his experience in his college and scholarship application essays. And basically, so Kyle has, his parents had been on a mayor-for-the-day and a fundraiser, and so he's spent part of the day here at City Hall. He's visited all the department heads and discussed what their jobs are and what they do with the city. And then Kyle's also spent about an hour riding around in the fire truck, and then after that, he spent some time in a police car, and I think they even pulled somebody over. But the good news is, he gave him a warning. But I'm gonna let Kyle help me tonight, and so keep just...
All right. I would like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Wednesday, September eighth, two thousand and ten, to order. Okay? Will the city clerk please call the roll and make final announcements?
Good evening, Mayor Wykoff, and Mayor Lockwood, and council. I will be happy to call roll for the September eighth, two thousand and ten, regular meeting. However, I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the meeting or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk staff prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. When you hear the bell, you have thirty seconds to complete your remarks. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided however that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Kyle Wykoff?
Here.
Mayor Joe Lockwood?
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman?
Here.
Councilmember Julie Zoner Bailey?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss?
Here.
Councilmember Burke Hewitt?
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria?
Here.
Councilmember Alan Tartt?
Here.
The sons of the American Revolution and daughters of the American Revolution will proudly lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight. Would everyone please rise?
Ready? Out. Right, face. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. Left, face. One, on. Ready? Out. Dismissed. We've got our special guest Kyle here, and I also want to thank the Sons of the American Revolution for being here and leading us in our pledge. Also want to welcome the Eco Explorer Club and the junior beta students at Hopewell Middle. We're excited to have you guys here and looking forward to your presentation in a little bit. At that point, will the city clerk please make, call the next item?
Next item is approval of meeting agenda.
Okay. Are there any items to be considered?
Mayor, I'd like to add tonight an executive session to discuss litigation and land acquisition.
Okay. Any other items? Okay, do I have a motion in a second?
We're gonna leave it on.
We're gonna leave it on, and then we'll discuss it.
Mayor, I make the motion to approve the meeting agenda as recommended by staff.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion by councilmember Tartt, second by councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. I'm gonna let Kyle read this next, on here on public comment. Take your time.
The next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and the city council to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There is no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from the council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember that this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address before you hit the record. You will have five minutes for your remarks. Is there any public comment?
No, Mayor Wykoff, there's not.
Okay. That's just for your information, Kyle, you can tell when there's not something on the agenda that is a heated topic, because we usually would have some public comment if there was some citizens concerned and all that, so it's a rarity that we have no public comment, so. Okay, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please sound the items on the consent agenda?
Our first item is approval of the August ninth, two thousand and ten work session meeting minutes, agenda item number ten, twelve twenty. Approval of the August sixteenth, two thousand and ten, regular council meeting minutes, agenda item number ten, twelve twenty-one. Our third item is approval of an agreement between the U.S. Department of Justice, DEA, and the City of Milton Police Department for HIDTA Task Force, agenda item number ten, twelve twenty-two. Number four is approval of the following plats. Laura Villa Estates Minor Subdivision, Original Five-Lot Subdivision, Replatting Lots Three through Five, Southwest Corner of Birmingham Village, Minor Commercial Plat Condo, Plat for Commercial Condominium Use. Next Fountain Key Trust, Minor Plat, Creates One New Lot, Two Total, on Thirty-Eight Acres. And finally Jeff and Crystal Perkins, Minor Plat, Combine Lots Two and Three, Three Total, on Eight Point Three Acres. This is agenda item number ten, twelve twenty-three. Our fifth item is approval of a contract between Delinquent Tax Services Incorporated and the City of Milton, Georgia, for delinquent tax collection services, agenda item number ten, twelve twenty-four. Next is approval of a resolution for the supplemental lease agreement with Georgia Municipal Association for Pierce Contender Series Pumper, agenda item number ten, twelve twenty-five. Our seventh item is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton, Georgia, and Low Engineers LLC relating to the management and collection of data in support of Milton's NPDES permit, agenda item number ten, twelve twenty-six. Next item is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton, Georgia, and Wolverton and Associates in the amount of five thousand eight hundred seventy-eight dollars for a drainage repair project on Thompson Road, agenda item number ten, twelve twenty-seven. Our ninth item is approval of an agreement for sale of realty between the City of Milton, Georgia, and First Citizens Bank and Trust. This is agenda item number ten, twelve twenty-eight. Our final consent agenda item is approval of an agreement with MARTA for the use of offset funds for the purchase of a one-acre parcel on the southwest corner of Deerfield Parkway and Webb Road. This is agenda item number ten, twelve twenty-nine.
Okay. Is there a motion in a second?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as proposed by staff.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. We've got a motion by councilmember Luss, second by councilmember Bailey. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thirty-nine, so that's unanimous.
Moving on to reports and presentations, will the city clerk please sound the item?
Our first presentation is a proclamation recognizing Constitution Week, presented to the sons of the American Revolution and the daughters of the American Revolution. This is being presented by councilmember Bill Luss.
Two hundred and thirty-three years ago, a group of loyal patriots, just following the Revolutionary War, spent some grueling months together developing the blueprint for our society. And that blueprint became known as our Constitution. This week, or this coming week, is known as Constitution Week, and it's a federally authorized week, and proclamations are federally authorized. At this time, I'd like to present the proclamation to Piedmont Chapter, Sons of the American Revolution, and also the Daughters of the American Revolution, and that is the Chesta T. Chapter, believe. I don't see Ms. Johnson here. Do you know if she's coming or not? She's not, okay. Good, I'm front.
Paul Presto, Jack Gordon, Tom Sam, Colonel George Spurman, and Dr. Robert Schott. Proclamation, Constitution Week, two thousand and ten, whereas the Constitution of the United States, in our union of our liberty, is a product of reflection and choice, violates the principles of the Constitution of the Republic, dedicated, ruled by law, not by man, whereas September seventeenth, two thousand and ten, marks the two hundred and twenty-third anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America, by the constitutional amendment, whereas it is fitting and proper to accord initial recognition to this memorable anniversary and to patriotic exercises that will commemorate the occasion. Whereas public law, nine one five, guarantees the issue of the proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September seventeenth through September twenty-third as Constitution. This Constitution Week, we say of Milton, urge all citizens to study the Constitution and to express gratitude for the privilege of growing the citizenship of our republic, functioning under this matured body of laws, the Constitution of the United States of America. Therefore, Joe Lockwood, as mayor of the City of Milton, proclaim the week of September seventeenth, two thousand and ten, through September twenty-third, two thousand and ten, as Constitution Week in the City of Milton, and ask all citizens to reaffirm the ideals and frameworks of the Constitution and the Seventeenth and Seventh. Presented to the Sons of the United Republic of Piedmont Chapter, given the honor and seal of the City of Milton, Georgia, on this date of September, two thousand and ten.
Jeff, I'm gonna go down, I'll get the chair.
We get to get up and down.
Thank you, Bill, for presenting. Okay, well, the city clerk, please sound our next item.
Our next item is a presentation by the Hopewell Middle School Eco Explorer Club and junior beta students of decorated recycled horseshoes to the City of Milton for display. This is presented by Chris Lagerblum.
Your councilor don't have a presentation tonight, other than to make some introductions to you. I can tell you, at the end of the school year, last school year, the city was approached by a teacher at Hopewell Middle School to continue on the tradition of providing some horseshoes to the school for decoration, that they could decorate, and then we could have in assorted places in Milton and the city. I think you'll understand a little bit more about what happened if I introduce, there's a couple of young students who are here to present tonight, and if it hasn't changed, it's Gabby and Brendan. So if I could just introduce Gabby and Brendan, then they can take it from here.
Hi, my name's Gabriella Black, and I'm a seventh grader and a member of Hopewell Middle School's Eco Explorers Club. The mission of Hopewell Middle School's Eco Explorers Club is to encourage students, their families, teachers, and the community to improve their relationship with the environment. The Eco Explorers Club will consist of a variety of environmental activities throughout the school year. The students will actively encourage environmental improvements, both within our school and in the community. Students will learn more about preserving our environment, including reusing, reducing, and recycling. We look forward to serving the community any way we can volunteer.
Hello, my name is Brandon Fahy, and I am an eighth grader at Hopewell Middle School. I'm a member of the Junior Beta Club and Eco Explorers Club. We would like to thank city manager Lagerblum for personally donating the horseshoes that the students decorated this year. We are proud of the school's Mustang mascot and of the City of Milton's equestrian heritage. Hopewell students enjoy doing back to the community. Thank you.
On behalf of our principal, Mr. Bill Thompson, and our club sponsors, Ms. Deia Versa and Ms. Sladuski, and the entire school, for the second year, we were proud to present the City of Milton with decorated horseshoes that can be displayed around City Hall and the fire station in Milton. Thank you.
Yeah, let's get some pictures. And just so by now, we're gonna proudly display those, so. Let's come here and get a picture.
For all citizens and all citizens of Milton, we are aware of our honor, we really wish that this will generate new, proud effects and benefits for citizens. Thank you very much.
Well, we typically do our first presentation, basically stating that this issue, two weeks from now, our next meeting that we're gonna actually debate it this way, it's on the record, people can look at the door lock, if the citizens are interested in this, they'll know that next week, our next meeting, they'll come.
Yeah, they'll come back next week.
Do you want to do that now?
See these three?
Okay. You want to read this, just moving on. Moving on to first presentation, will the city clerk please sound the items?
First item is ZM ten dash zero two, a request by JSB Triangle Inc., located on Morris Road in Bethany Bend, Hidden Forest Subdivision, to modify two thousand and two Z dash one zero five and two thousand and three ZM dash sixty-seven, two thousand and three VC dash zero two four seven, to modify condition two A, two thousand and three ZM dash zero six seven, by deleting the November eighteenth, two thousand and three site plan currently referenced and substituting and placing in lieu thereof the site plan filed on June thirtieth, two thousand and ten, to modify condition three E, two thousand and two Z hyphen one zero five, by reducing the minimum fifty-foot perimeter principal building setback to thirty-five feet where the subject site adjoins property zone AG one, agricultural. This is agenda item number ten, eleven ninety-six, originally deferred on August second, two thousand and ten. Our second presentation item is RZ ten zero four, approval to amend the City of Milton zoning ordinance to create a required distance for convenient stores and service stations from residential uses, zoning districts, within the Northwest Fulton Overlay and State Route Nine Overlay districts, Chapter sixty-four, Division five, and Chapter sixty-four, Division six. Agenda item number ten, twelve twelve, administratively deferred on August sixteenth, two thousand and ten. Our third item is approval of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the City of Milton, to establish the code of ethics for the City of Milton, to further and incorporate the policies and laws of the state of Georgia relating to ethical standards, to create the Board of Ethics and provide for board membership, duties, and responsibilities, to provide for the disposition of ethics complaints, to ensure compliance with ethical standards, to repeal conflicting provisions, to provide for severability, to provide for an effective date, and for other purposes. This is agenda item number ten, twelve twelve. Our final item is approval of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Milton, Georgia, to adopt amendments to the fiscal two thousand and ten budget for each fund of the City of Milton, Georgia, amending the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, amending the several items of revenue anticipations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. This is agenda item number ten, twelve thirty.
Okay. Is there a motion in a second?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the first presentation.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. A motion by councilmember Tartt, second by councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Moving on to public hearings, will the city clerk sound our next item?
Approval of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Milton, Georgia, to adopt the fiscal two thousand and eleven budget for each fund of the City of Milton, Georgia, appropriating the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, adopting the several items of revenue anticipations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. Discussed at work session on August ninth, two thousand and ten, first presentation and first public hearing was on August sixteenth. Special called work session on August twenty-third. This is agenda item number ten, twelve eleven. Ms. Stacy Inglis.
Mayor, council, I'll handle this one for tonight, and I don't know necessarily how much of a public presentation you want at this point, since we don't have any speaker cards. I can also tell you that we had held the requisite number of public hearings prior to tonight. There was questions to whether or not we had included the complete budget as available on our website, even though I don't know that we necessarily required to do that. In the abundance of caution, we advertised one additional public hearing, knowing full well that the document would be available for public inspection and has been that way for a week. So this really is a formality tonight. I can tell you that this budget that you presented is a budget that shows revenues and expenditures around seventeen million, three hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars. From the prior presentations on this budget, there are a couple of things that have changed, four things after our work session. One, that we removed the assistant city manager salary in its entirety, and that the direction of council amended the cost of living adjustment. With that removal, amended it from one point five to two percent. We added the cascade trailer, which is an item that is used by the fire department to refill air tanks at the scene of a fire, which we talked about, and we removed the annual report printing and postage in the spirit of doing it electronically this year. Also, part of our budget discussion at the last meeting, councilmember Tartt and several members brought up the idea that we should look at software that will allow us to perform the auto-turn type function, and we have, instead of adding that to the acquisition of a piece of software, we have found out how we can buy that on a pay-per-use, which over the course of the time, and the frequency that we use it, pay-per-use is a lot more efficient than actually buying the software itself. Other than that, council, I can tell you this budget from our last presentation has remained largely unchanged. I do want to bring your attention to the fact that we are still in the final phases of getting costs associated with employee benefits, particularly healthcare. What is budgeted in this budget is the most conservative number that we need to have in here, and at some point in the future, I do believe that we will be coming back to you and saying that number can be reduced as well. We just won't know to what extent until our employees go through the open enrollment process and can drill that down a little bit more before October the first kicks in. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer those or handle this public hearing. Anything handled questions under the unfinished business, that's what's changed in the budget since the last presentation.
Okay. Just to confirm, we don't have any public comments, is that correct?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay. Is there any questions for staff and council? Okay. There we go, and then I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Okay. Here we go. Then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Let me just explain to council, basically, something important like this budget. We have to have a certain number of public hearings advertised so that the public has full disclosure and can comment. So this is actually our fourth public hearing on this. Fourth time. And just out of the abundance of caution, again, it's something we've been working on for a long time. But basically, that's what a public hearing is, to allow the public to come and give their comments or ask questions or whatever. So, all right, so that's closed. There are no items on the zoning agenda. Moving on to unfinished business. Will the city clerk sound the next item?
Approval of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Milton, Georgia, to drop the fiscal 2011 budget for each fund of the City of Milton, Georgia, appropriating the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, adopting the several items of revenue anticipations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. Agenda Item Number 10, 1211. Discuss at work session on August 9. First presentation and public hearing on August 16. Special called work session on August 23. Second public hearing today on September 8.
Is there a motion in second? Mr. Mayor, I move to approve an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Milton to adopt the fiscal 2011 budget for each fund of the City of Milton, Georgia, appropriating the amounts shown in each budget as expenditures, adopting the several items of revenue anticipations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. Agenda Item Number 10-1211.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Councilmember Lusk, second by Councilmember Thurmond. Is there any council discussion?
Can I discuss just real- I just want to make reference to the fact that if we had done a staff presentation for this item, it would have been almost identical to the presentation we would have done for the public hearing.
Okay. Again, any discussion? Councilmember Bell?
I just wanted to thank staff and our city manager. I know that we've been through a variety of questions, and it has always met with professionalism, and you guys have done an outstanding job as always. I just want to thank you because the budget's probably one of the most important things that we and you do. And I know there's been a lot of diligence by everybody here, as well as throughout staff and all the departments. So just thank you. I know that it's an exhaustive process, and you do it still with smiles on your faces, and we appreciate that. And thank you for continuing to be conservative in managing our taxpayer dollars. Just thank you.
And thank you to Stacy's baby for holding off on that.
We do appreciate that, yes.
Okay. All right, so we've got a motion in second to adopt a fiscal 2011 budget. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. And basically, just for Kyle's sake, as you can see how thick the budget is, this is compiled from work from our staff, from Stacy's office, from all the department heads, and they've been working on it for months. It's been presented to us a while back. We've had been presented at meetings. It's been online for the public to look at. We've had work sessions where we get together and ask questions and go through it. And as council asks questions and goes through it, the department heads and city manager, finance director make changes if we feel that they need to. So basically, once that's adopted, which it's adopted now, it's basically a guide or a bible of all the costs in each department, and legally, the city staff has to stay within those costs. If there's anything that goes over, we'll have to amend the budget at some time. And if there's anything that we spend less, then we can reappropriate that money elsewhere. But that basically gives them a guide so that we can't just spend money and go out and buy something. It's all appropriated for, so. Okay, will the city clerk please sound the next item?
Next item is approval of a resolution amending Resolution Number 10-0868, appointing members to the Historic Preservation Commission for the City of Milton by appointing members at large and District 1. This is Agenda Item Number 10, 1231. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay. First, for my Historic Preservation Committee, I am nominating, and I don't think she needs any introduction, but I'm nominating Patty Silva. And my thoughts on that are, in this position, we've got some lifelong residents here of Milton that are very familiar with historic structures and whatnot. And we also, I truly believe Patty, even though she hasn't lived here that long, is very passionate about historic structures and certainly is interested. And I've spent time talking to her, and we're on the same page. So I'm proud to nominate Patty Silva as my Historic Preservation Committee person. So is there any questions? Okay. Do we want to vote on each one?
Since you do it, I'll do it individually.
Okay. And then, I guess Karen, you have somebody to nominate tonight?
Yes.
Okay. So do we- I guess we'll go ahead and vote on mine. Okay. All right, do I have a motion in a second?
Mayor, I'll put forward a motion to approve your recommendation of Mrs. Patty Silva, according to resolution, amending Resolution Number 10-0868, appointing members to the Historic Preservation Commission for the City of Milton by appointing members for the at-large position in particular this evening.
I'll second it.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Thurmond. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, now we'll move on to District 1 with Councilmember Thurmond.
Mayor, I would like to ask that we appoint Mark Hancock as the representative for District 1. Mark has previously served on a Historic Preservation Commission. He is also with the private bank, serving there as managing director and executive vice president. He received a Bachelor of Administration in Finance from Troy State University and is very active in the Rotary Club. He has two children, Tyler and Troy. And he is- comes from the city of Savannah, so he is very much aware of how his historic preservation can be done correctly.
Okay. Do I have a motion in a second?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Mark Hancock for District 1, Historic Preservation Commission.
Second motion. Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Tark, second by Councilmember Lusk. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Burton, do you have a pointee?
No, we'll do it next time.
Okay. Okay. No one's here in attendance, so at a convenient time, we will sort these people in. Basically, this is the formality that we go through. If we as individuals want to appoint somebody to a committee, we have to get the entire council to vote on that. Once voted on, then I'll swear in the minute, either at this meeting, if they were here, they're not, or at another time, but to serve on committees for us. So we have a ton of volunteers in the City of Milton, so that's really good. So I don't have any others to do, so we're going to ask the city clerk to sound the next item.
Next item is approval of a resolution amending Resolution Number 10-01126, a resolution appointing a member to the City of Milton Design Review Board at Large. This is Agenda Item Number 10, 1232. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay, again, my appointment to the DRB is Mr. Bruce Smitherman. I think all of you probably know Bruce. He's served on other boards for me as an appointee, and is involved with the city and really wants to help out. So I'm proud to nominate Bruce Smitherman for my DRB appointee. So I'll answer any questions or accept a motion in a second.
Mayor, I'll put forward a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll just state the motion. That would be to appoint Mr. Bruce Smitherman under Agenda Item Number 10-1232 as the at-large and Mayor Lockwood's appointment for the Design Review Board.
Second motion. Okay, I got a motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Lusk. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Will the city clerk please sound the next item?
Deliver a resolution appointing myself, the AM Gordon.
You can't read that. Let's take Chris on a wire, and I will swear in a point.
Approval of a resolution appointing Suti Ordinance City Clerk for the City of Milton, Georgia, effective September 8, 2010. And I'll take the short presentation on this just as a follow-up to our executive session in the last meeting. Our position as city clerk has been vacant on a permanent basis since the departure of our last clerk, and Suti has filled in an interim role. I can tell you that it is without hesitation that I make a recommendation to the mayor that we appoint Suti as the city clerk for the City of Milton. Certainly, that is up to y'all. This is one of the charter created positions that requires your endorsement. And hopefully, if there was a question, I answered those the last time we met on this topic. And I just ask that you move forward in approving this resolution.
Okay. Is there a motion in second?
I'll make a motion. The approval of a resolution appointing Suti AM Gordon as city clerk for the City of Milton, Georgia, effective September 8, 2010. Item Number 10, 1233.
Second motion. I got it first. All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Hewitt and a second by Councilmember Joe Lusk. I'm just going to flip a coin. I think I heard Bill first, but- No, do you want to go? It was Councilmember Longoria. So is there any discussion? The only thing I want to say before we vote, I just talked to Suti earlier. I just want to welcome her here on board, and we appreciate the good job she's doing and look forward to working with her, continuing in the future.
Thank you. Honor and pleasure.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Can I do this? That's not a loud outburst.
Get the gavel.
Friendly outburst.
You'll step up, Suti, when the role of the mayor now-
Yeah? What about that?
Read it.
Make it a bit up.
I do solemn swear in firm- That I will faithfully perform the duties of-
That I will faithfully perform the duties of-
City clerk.
City clerk.
Of this city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And laws of the state of Georgia.
And laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America. Okay. Congratulations. Just to hand what we're going to do. Once you repeat it, and then if you look them in the eyes, they can't repeat it back to you. You can transcribe, thank you. Thank you, city. You have to look at them.
No, that's at work, right? No time to solve it.
Okay, I'm going to move on now to council reports. Is there any council reports or anything anybody wants to talk about in the council? Bill? Just want to repeat what has been said before and elaborate on it. Appreciate all of the staff's efforts and city manager, and particularly Stacy's efforts in putting this budget together. And I wish her all the best with her and her new family here in the next, hopefully not before she gets home.
It's not the next two hours, right?
Two months? And given that, I'd suggest that we dismiss her from this meeting. Why keep her any longer? Okay. Anybody else? All right, move on to staff reports.
You know, outside of executive session tonight, Mayor, I really just have one, and that's to let you know what you already know, like, let the rest of the council know that we were well attended and represented this morning at a meeting that was more of a county-wide meeting dealing with House Bill 277, which is a transportation law. It's one that we want to stay on as a government and as an organization to know exactly how that one's shaking out and working. We met, Chairman Neves called a meeting this morning, and there was a sort of people from other jurisdictions in Fulton County Mall came together. And there were a couple of things in the meeting that, believe it or not, we all agreed upon, which is shocking that you put that kind of a group together that we would actually all agree on anything. But we did. So just wait for further updates. Just know that we are keenly aware that House Bill 277 is out there if you start to hear questions, comments about how the state is going to allocate. Rest of that, I've got executive session.
Okay. And I just want to, before we break into executive session, I want to thank Kyle for being here. Hope it was a worthwhile learning experience. He had to miss football practice this afternoon, so I know that wasn't very good. But, you know, as I take people around City Hall and hopefully he'll agree with me, you really get a sense that, I know a lot of people's attitude of government is just not good and wasteful, and people that really don't care. They're just putting their time in. But as I walk around and I introduce people like Kyle or citizens or whoever to our staff and see what's going on, it's really impressive. And, you know, I put our people in a, say, everybody you met, I put them on par with, you know, any private business or private company or whatever. So I think we're all proud here at the City of Milton that we've got a great team and are spending our dollars wisely, and our citizens are hopefully getting a lot of bang for their buck. So hopefully, it was worthwhile to you. And I'm going to also make sure that Kyle gets a letter and some stuff from Jason, who's going to do it. And I'm going to write him a nice letter explaining everything he did today so that he can, you know, put that in his resume, and hopefully that will help him out in the future. So we wish you well. All right, we're, as we added in our, as we amended our agenda, we're going to go into executive session to discuss-
Land acquisition.
Land acquisition and litigation. Do I have a motion in a second?
Mayor, move to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
For land acquisition.
For land acquisition.
And purpose of litigation. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I have a motion in a second to reconvene the meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, now we are reconvening, so. The only thing I wanted to add, I should have said this during reports, just to, as you guys know, we talked about meeting with Mr. Inlow and the principal about the noise situation, which we did. We met with the principal, Chris and I, Principal Jones. Tim Inlow's mother, Patty Inlow, was able to attend. We discussed their issues. The principal was very open to working with them. He had a couple of suggestions, which he was in the process of. One was getting some new bleachers for the band practice that they put to where the noise would be focused out towards Northwestern Middle School. So that may help. He's also working on some landscaping, some trees and cedars that would deflect sound to go on the side that would keep the sound from going that direction. And then, last home football game, the principal and I did go over to the Inlow's property, and it's like when your car's making a noise and you take a shot, and it didn't. You know, unfortunately, there wasn't, we didn't hear any noise, but the game was going on, and Tim's Inlow said that, you know, it really wasn't that bad. It's more when the band's practicing and whatnot. So we didn't get to hear, you know, from what the same thing he said. But again, the principal was very open-minded. I think it was a good rapport between Tim and Low and the principal. It was a productive meeting anyways, just so that they know that he is trying. So again, I don't believe there's anything the city can do right now, but just to let you know that Principal Jones was handled it very well, and the Inlows, at least at this point, realize that he has taken it serious and is looking into some things. So, you know, I'll kind of follow up on it and try to go out there again, but I just wanted to let you know. At least we did start the process and are addressing his concerns.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, do I have a motion in second to adjourn to regular meeting? Second, third. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you. The official term is good.